The November 12th, 2013 City Commission Meeting for the city of Muskegon. Before we begin, I will ask Pastor Mercy Miller from Samuel Lutheran Church to come forward and lead us in a brief prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Miller.
I'd just like to congratulate you on your reelection, Mayor.
Thank you.
Let's join in prayer.
Please, everyone would please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give thanks for those gathered here to do the work of this community. We pray that it would be done with integrity and with goodwill. We pray that all of us would work together as schools, churches, civic organizations, and government to enhance our community and to help prevent violence here. We give thanks for our veterans that serve our country. We pray for troops both at home and abroad, and we ask your guidance upon them and your protection. And we pray for those who suffer from the typhoon that occurred in the Philippines last week. We pray for the victims and for relief workers, that both may be blessed with endurance and with hope. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Markowski.
Here.
Mayor Galeran.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Here.
Commissioner Wieringel.
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Thank you. Well, before we get into the meat and potatoes, we have some fun stuff. The 2013 Employee Service Awards. Commissioners and Mr. Manager and City Council, how about we go up front and give our best regards to these individuals as we call them on?
I do.
You do.
Just array yourself.
They'll make me play Run the Gauntlet.
I gotta take notes.
But it's my pleasure to be able to take this opportunity to represent the men and women of this organization that work so hard and diligently to keep it all together in the many facets that it takes to keep this city running and the water running and the fires put out and the checkbook balanced and responding to those events when we need our police officers. But with no further ado, I'd like to call up Michael D. Armstrong in recognition of five years of dedicated service to the city of Muskegon. It seems just like yesterday, huh, Mike? Steven with a P-H., just like me, D. Fisher, in recognition of five years of dedicated service to the city of Muskegon. And I've got high hopes. Hey, I hope Mitchell. Come on up. Fifteen years of dedicated service. Twenty-five years. Dennis Moore, otherwise known as Denny A. D. Powers. And Rebecca S. Hamel, twenty-five years of dedicated service. Again, thank you so much for all your dedication and hard work. Chief, we have some more fun stuff?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Okay, the first thing we have from the Police Department is we have a program called Good Buddy Bucks, and it's a program that was devised and Denny made this happen where we work with social justice, and for us to have like positive contacts and mentoring with youth, we give out these tickets, and they're called Good Buddy Bucks tickets. So when we see a child with their parents or without their parents doing a good deed, we issue this ticket. Well, we had to have some kind of reward with this, right? And so it's very expensive. Well, Jar Partnerships stepped up. That's the McDonald's here in the Muskegon County area. They stepped up and they made the tickets for us, and so when the officers issue these tickets, the child or the parents can go to McDonald's and cashes in for a little treat. So I want to give you a little background of what Buddy Bucks was. And now I want the Mayor to actually read the resolution to Jar Partners.
There you go. That was something about the fact that I signed it, so I must read it?
There you go.
Okay. But it is my honor. It truly is. Resolution of recognition of J.A.R. Partnerships continuing participation in the second annual Good Buddy Bucks program. Whereas the city, commission, and Muskegon Police Department, in partnership with the Social Justice Commission, recognizes the importance of building good character in our youth today in order to positively impact the future for everyone, and whereas it is our desire to build positive mentoring relationships between law enforcement and youth, and whereas it is our belief that the more positive mentoring situations we can place youth in, the less likely they will be to turn to negative influences and activities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Muskegon City Commission hereby recognizes and thanks J.A.A.R. Did I put too many As in there? J.A.A.R. Partnerships for its participation in the second year of the successful Good Buddy Bucks program, which rewards youth for displaying good character and allows youth to positively interact with law enforcement. Given on behalf of the Muskegon City Commission this 12th day of November 2013, it's my pleasure to be able to present this to our partners and fellow citizens at McDonald's. Thank you. I don't see Natasha out here. Is there anybody here from Jar Partnerships? There was a possibility she was not going to make it, so I just want to double check. Okay, we will make sure that they get this, but I just want to point out very quickly that we were working and the chief came up with this idea, and he tasked me to go out and see if we could make this happen. And we worked through the Social Justice Commission, and our full intent was to find a local establishment, fast food place, what have you, that would go half with us. And the Social Justice Commission would fund half of the cost of whatever goodies were given out, so they redeemed these tickets. And when we got ahold of Jar Partnerships, and this is their second year doing this now, they actually said absolutely not, we're covering all the costs. So these are redeemed for apple dippers or ice cream or what have you. And this year, I think we had 450-something redeemed out of the 2,000 we actually gave out. So that's actually a good turnaround when you're giving somebody a little paper ticket to take home, that many actually made it back. But I just want to say, it's so amazing that they covered the complete cost. They covered the printing of everything, they covered the entire cost of the food. So kudos to them for coming through, Muskegon Kids.
Okay, our next certificate of appreciation is to a citizen. Do we have Diane Cooy here tonight? Coming up, Diane? Okay, while she's coming up here, I'm going to read this to all so they know what Diane has done. The Muskegon Police Department Certificate of Appreciation. This certifies, this certificate is a grateful award to Diane Cooy. Our fellow citizen in recognition of her selfless service to her community on July 19th, 2013. Ms. Cooy disregarded her own safety to swim out and assist a young lady who was struggling in the riptide and the high waves. Ms. Cooy assisted the youth by dragging her to shore and eventually, obviously, saved her life. Ms. Cooy's quick actions and self-assist was a true act of saving a life. I'm going to add something to that. That evening, I was called out to the beach. We in fact did have a drowning, and she participated, and so we didn't have two drownings. And I can tell you this, the night I was out there, the lake was ugly. I mean, there was high waves, high winds, and I take my hat off to Ms. Cooy for the quick actions going out there and saving an individual. Thank you. Our last thing here is our, each year, the Police Department sponsors what we call the Citizens Police Academy. We have citizens from around the area that come to our 10-week program, sit here every Wednesday night for a couple, three hours, and they learn about our Police Department, what goes on. And I'll tell you what, I've watched it since I've been here, and once again, Denny Powers is our coordinator for that program. It's truly a great program. It helps people understand what their police services do. And each and every time we have citizens participate, and tonight, we've asked them to come because we just graduated our Fall 2013 Citizen Police Academy graduates. We'd like to also recognize and honor them because it truly is a great program, and it really helps the public relations for our department to show citizens, A, what we do, what they're getting for their tax dollars, and I think it really helps people understand what the Muskegon Police are all about. So Denny, I'm going to have you come up here and read the names, and I'll pass out the certificates.
I'm actually going to read the list of names, and I know that we have several here because I saw them walk in, and hopefully they're not embarrassed. But I have them come up here right off front, and then we're going to have the Mayor actually read the resolution, and then we'll hand the certificates out from there. So let's just have them all come up here in front if we can. Jacqueline Behr, if you're here. Yep. Jody Geiger, I know I saw you. Denise Murphy, Olivia Neal, Connie Nesberry, Mary Ramos, Cora Russ, Diane Spohlhoff, and Eric Uzarsky. It was a small, but it was a very good class. I tell you this, one of the, I don't want to say one of the best because that puts down the rest, doesn't it? But they were a very good class. You are the best. Well, thank you all for having, taking the time out of your busy lives to participate with Muskegon City Police and really become a part of us and learn the ins and the outs and participate and becoming very much part of the family. So now, it's my pleasure to present this resolution in recognition of the Fall 2013 Citizen Academy graduates. Whereas the city commission desires to provide citizens with a better understanding of the functions of law enforcement, dispelling misconceptions, and increasing positive communication between citizens and police, and whereas it is the desire of the Muskegon City Commission to encourage cooperation between the public and law enforcement to positively impact our communities, now therefore be it resolved that the Muskegon City Commission hereby congratulates and recognizes Jacqueline Behr, Jody Geiger, Denise Murphy, Olivia Neal, Connie Nesberry, Mary Ramos, Cora Russ, Diane Spohlhoff, and Eric Uzarsky for their faithful attendance, completion, and graduation from the 10-week Fall 2013 Citizens Police Academy. And this is given on behalf of the Muskegon City Commission this 12th day of November 2013, and thank you so much for your participation. All done? No cake and ice cream?
Later.
Okay, good. Madam Clerk, are we ready?
Yes.
Let's do the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the October 22nd City Commission meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Sledge hauling and disposal, Public Works, summary request. Authorized staff to enter into an agreement with Ottawa County Farms, Landfill, and Cords Trucking for $23,634. Staff recommendation, staff recommends acceptance of the bid from Ottawa County Farm, Landfills, and Cords Trucking for sludge removal and disposal. Moratorium on fees for 2014 vacant buildings, planning economic development, summary request. Request to approve a moratorium on fees charged to owners of vacant buildings that are entering their sixth-year billing cycle or under in 2014. Eligibility requirements for the moratorium of fees charged are proposed to remain the same as 2013. Moratoriums would be determined based on the criteria included on the vacant building registration moratorium with one additional, one addition to item number three of the criteria in bold. Three, there were no more than two environmental letters sent to the address and no, with no work being performed at the address in the vacancy years in question, nor did the city need to board the structure in order to secure it. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of a fee moratorium for vacant building invoices meeting the approved criteria. Emergency pump replacement at Beach Street Lift Station, Public Works, summary request. Authorized staff to purchase a new pump from Kennedy Industries for the Beach Street Lift Station. Staff recommendation, approved purchase. Acceptance of an easement from ADAC Automotive, Inc. at the southwest corner of Keating and Port City Boulevard, Engineering, summary request. Accept a bike path easement from ADAC Automotive, Inc. to construction and maintain a bike path at the southwest corner of Keating Avenue and Port City Boulevard, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign the easement documents and direct staff to record said easement. Staff recommendation, accept easement and direct staff to record said easement. Winter closure of Beach Street between Lake Shore Drive and Beechwood Park from the 3rd Friday in December to the 3rd Friday in March, Public Works, summary request. Authorized staff to annually close Beach Street from Lake Shore Drive to Beechwood Park. The closure would take effect from the 3rd Friday in December until the 3rd Friday of the following March. Staff recommendation, authorized staff to annually install signage barricades for the temporary 90-day closure of Beach Street. Approval of the Fair Housing Agreement with Muskegon County Community Neighborhood Services, summary request. The cities of Muskegon, Muskegon Heights, Norton Shores, and the county of Muskegon are entering into an agreement with the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan to conduct fair housing testing in the county of Muskegon per the recommendation of the 2009 Analysis of Impediments Report. Staff recommendation, to approve the agreement and authorize the Mayor to sign. Extending the master plan, planning economic development, summary request. Authorized, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that municipalities review their master, their master plan every five years and decide whether they need to update it or extend the current plan. Staff feels that current plan developed in 1997, which was also updated in 2008, is still sufficient, and that focus should be put on the current zoning ordinance amendment. Planning Commission unanimously voted in favor of extending the current master plan at their special meeting on October 31st. Staff is requesting permission to extend the master plan and to authorize staff to distribute the master plan to surrounding municipalities and ask for comments as required by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. The municipalities will have 63 days to comment, then the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to extend the current plan. Staff recommendation, approval to extend the master plan and authorization to distribute the plan. Resolution authorizing the SAW grant agreement, Engineering, summary request. Adopt the resolution for the SAW grant, which Prime and New Hoff Engineer was authorized back in June of this year to prepare. Staff recommendation, adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? If not, I entertain a motion for acceptance.
So moved.
There you go. Would you like to second that? We got it covered then. It has been moved by Commissioner Wieringel, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mayor Galeran.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. In the interest of individual needs and scheduling tonight, I am going to jump to new business, item A regarding the transmittal of the 6/30/2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and then we'll get back on track after that. So can we have that, Madam Clerk?
Under new business, you mean?
Under new business, yes.
Transmittal of the June 30th, 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, Finance, summary request. The city's June 30th, 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report has previously been distributed to city commissioners via email and hard copy. The CAFR is also available on the city's website. The CAFR also includes the annual independent auditor's report required by state law. At this time, the CAFR is being formally transmitted to the city commission. The CAFR has been prepared in accordance with all current governmental accounting standards board GASB pronouncements, and also includes a single audit of federal grants received by the city. Staff recommendation, acceptance of the June 30th, 2013 CAFR and authorization for staff to transmit the CAFR to appropriate federal, state, and private agencies.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we accept a June 30th, 2013 CAFR and authorize staff to transmit the CAFR to the appropriate federal, state, and private agencies.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Wieringel, to accept the June 30th, 2013 CAFR and give authorization for staff to transmit the CAFR to appropriate federal, state, and private agencies. Before we go further, good evening, interim director Lewis.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. This evening, we have Eric Van Dopp and Tim Arter from Brickley Delonge with us, and Eric is going to give you just a brief synopsis of the audit. I do have a couple extra copies if anyone needs an extra copy to follow along. Everyone has theirs.
You're at it.
All right. As Beth said, I'm Eric Van Dopp. I know you guys like to keep it short and simple, and there's a lot going on tonight, so that's exactly what I'm going to do. We'll just stick right to the book and just flip and look at a few important pages. Certainly would encourage you to read the whole thing if you're interested, but we'll look at the key spots. Starting in the front of the CAFR, on page five is the city's transmittal letter. This is just a nice overview in a general sense of the city as a whole, even beyond financial, just kind of a general overview is written by Tim. And it's just a nice thing to see there if you want to take a look at it, and we're going to flip past that. I just wanted to point it out. If you get to page 17, this is our independent auditor's report. I'll let you flip there. And this is really the most important part of an audit because this is what makes it an audit. Otherwise, these are just a set of financial statements, but this is the auditor's opinion letter, which makes it an audit. The opinion letter has gotten a little longer this year. There's some additional requirements and rule changes and things like that that have occurred that have changed the layout a little bit. So you guys have stretched your opinion letter into three pages now. But one of the changes was the subheaders were added. So if you actually want to go to the second page, we have a nice subheader at the top there that says opinions. And I will read that. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, the aggregately-discreetly presented component units, each major fund and the aggregate remaining funded formation of the city of Muskegon, Michigan as of June 30, 2013, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. That is one really long sentence, but the key spots are, present fairly in all material respects in accordance of generally accepted accounting principles. That is called an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that we can give, and that is actually a slightly new term. We used to call it unqualified, but one of the changes was the name change to the opinion letter, which was, I think was a good thing because unqualified confused people because it sounds bad even though it's not. So we're going to call it unmodified now, but good job. All's well. The numbers appear to be materially correct in the best of our tests and knowledge. So, all right, we'll just keep flipping here. Page 20 is the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is another document prepared by the city, primarily by Tim Paul, and this is, kind of focuses more on the numbers. The MDNA is kind of a nice section because the financial statements tell you what happened. The MDNA gives the city an opportunity to talk about more, about why things happened or why things happened, and also some discussion on future plans, that kind of a thing. So it's kind of a nice Cliff Notes overview of the numbers with a little bit more explanatory language. Once again, I just wanted to point it out. Let's start looking at some real numbers. If you want to go to page 38, we'll take a quick peek at the general fund. All right. The general fund is in the left column on page 38. This is a summarized version of the general fund. It is broken out in much greater detail in the back around page 72. It's broken out over several pages with budget information and all that, but we'll keep to the simple one here. First subtotal there, total revenues of $23,407,409. That's a decrease of about $715,000 from last year. Let me just point at some of the areas that changed. The first line in there is taxes. That encompasses both your property income taxes. The income tax portion of that is up about $94,000, and the property tax portion's down about $768,000. The city continues to have issues, as do most communities, with declining taxable value, which accounts for the drop in the property tax levy there. Licenses and permits, federal revenues are pretty close to last year. I will point out the state number, that $3.7 million is mostly revenue sharing. There's a few other little odds, state odds and ends in there, but that's actually up about $123,000 this year, and that's not something we've been able to say too much in the past decade or so, that revenue sharing actually went up. So that is definitely a plus. Local revenue is the same. That's just the tip of contribution to the Seawalker Arena. Charges for services, fines and forfeitures are both pretty similar to last year. Interest and rental income is down about $16,000, and the bulk of that is actually rental income. The city, as does everybody, other governmental units and individuals, continues to struggle to find any way to make a good rate of return. You do the best you can, but low interest rates really preclude a much bigger number than what you got. And then other revenue is down about $58,000 just due to CDBG reimbursements for various items. This year, we're down a little bit. So the bulk of that decrease, really the entire decrease is the property tax line item. Expenditure section, next one there, total expenditures of $21,95855, down about $1,084,000 from last year. Just a couple areas that changed, financial services there of about just shy of $2.2 million is down about $210,000, with a lot of that savings coming from the assessing area. Public safety of $12,500,000 is down about $371,000. Public safety of $12,500,000 is down about $371,000. There was a Department of Justice grant that had some extra activity in the prior year that's now wrapped up, and there was also some savings in the fire department with some of the staffing restructuring out there. Public works is up just a little bit, and other, big change, other governmental functions there of just shy of $300,000 is down about $471,000, and that's where a lot of the, the tax tribunal related to the Cobb was, plant was, in there last year. Debt services about the same. Capital outlays down about $139,000. You had some new accounting software and self, or phone upgrades in the prior year. So you're down a little over a million dollars in expenditures as a result. Excess of revenues over expenditures, $1456,554. Other financing sources and uses, there's some transfers in and out as the general fund receives money from other funds for various things, and in turn transfers money back out primarily to your, your street funds, major streets and local streets to, to help those funds with various matches and other requirements. That leaves you with your net change in fund balance of $1,119,161, and leaves you with an ending fund balance of $7,353,558. I would note, for external financial reporting purposes, the budget stabilization fund has to get rolled into the general fund. It's not allowed to be broken out, but for your internal purposes, you continue to track that separately. So $1.7 million of that is what you typically would see as budget stabilization, so that's why those numbers wouldn't match to internal reporting. The city has a policy that unassigned fund balance in the general fund should be equal to 13% of the prior year's revenues, and currently your unassigned fund balance is at 19.1%. So you are over your, your policy there. I'm going to touch on a couple of other funds briefly, but before I do that, any questions on the general fund? Okay, why don't we look at the sewer and water fund briefly? Those can be found on page 41. All right, sewer fund is in the left column on page 41. We'll just kind of jump down to the bottom. Change in net position, a decrease of $124,124, and that leaves ending net position of $17,185,628. I'd point out, a difference between the general fund and the sewer and water funds are in accounting jargon. Sewer and water funds are full accrual funds, which means all the fixed assets and related debt are on the books. So that $17 million isn't cash, it's, includes all of your pipe in the ground and related debt, that sort of thing. Supposed, so of that $17.1 million, the actual unrestricted amount there is about $4.5 million, which is up just a smidge from $4.3 million in the prior year. This fund has been doing better the last few years. You might remember five or six, seven, eight years ago, there was a few years there when it wasn't really doing very well, but it seems to have turned the corner, is doing better now. Obviously, there's a small loss there this year. I think, as you're well aware, you just kind of have to keep an eye on county rate charges for treatment and adopt accordingly if they go up. That's about all I've got to say about that one. Water fund is next door. Water fund has a decrease in net position of $303,170, ending net position of $28,696,130. About 2.3 million of that's unrestricted, as compared to about 3 million in the prior year, so the unrestricted is down in this fund as well. I think this is about the fifth year in a row this fund has had a loss. You've had some rate increases. Obviously, it's still showing a loss, but you're going to have some big changes here in about a year or so with some changes with wholesale customers and all that, that will have some big effect on this fund as well. So my advice to you, and this is the same as last year, just keep an eye on it, and that's about all I'm going to say about that one. And since we're, you're looking at it, the Marina Fund next door there is a loss of about $100,000 this year, and that's got ending net position of $1,924,000. Unrestricted is about $266,000, which is about the same as last year. Most of the Marina Fund's losses typically just in depreciation on some grant-funded projects that happened a few years ago. Any question on any of these guys on this page?
Just a clarification for people listening. When we talk about the Marina Fund, that includes all the boat launches as well, not just the Marina. So if people are looking at those numbers and say, oh my God, Artro Marina is expensive, it is, but it includes all the city boat launches in addition.
And the official name is Marina and Launch Ramp Fund, so I shortened that up, but yes, that's absolutely correct. All right, why don't we take a brief look? I think you're going to have some discussion on this in a little bit later on your pension, but if you go back to page 78, there's a schedule of funding progress for both your pension and your retiree healthcare, and this has gotten to be kind of a hot topic the last few years nationally. You see more and more discussion about other entities' pensions and retiree healthcare, and Detroit, I know their system's been in the news lately with discussion of bankruptcy, and then articles on other areas around the country as well. So I, I know you guys have kept up to speed on this, but I just wanted to touch on it because this is where you currently are. If you're looking at the, the top one there is a schedule of funding progress for MERS. 12/31/12 is the bottom line. MERS is, we always have to use the prior year's data because the current year data won't be available till next year, so this is a little out of date already. But as of 12/31/12, your third number column over, the unfunded liability there is about $6 million, and your currently funded ratio is about 94%. You'll see that that's come down a little bit over the last couple of years, and that's not any, anything to do with the city's contributions per se. The actuaries tell you what to contribute, and you contribute it. They've got a lot of different things they factor in and smooth out, and frankly, 2012 wasn't a really great year on the mark, stock market, so they didn't meet their expectations on return, and that accounted for some of the growth in that area, or growth in the, in the liability. I know you're going to have an agenda item later to contribute additional amounts to this fund, but I, you know, that 94% is still a pretty good number. It's a really good number, really, so I'd point that out. And then the one below it, this is your retiree healthcare, your other post-employment benefits plan. You're only required to have a valuation done on this every other year, so you're going to be having another one done in the near future. The most recent one on there is 12/31/11. The unfunded amount on that's about 4.8 million, but it's 76% funded, and that is really, really good, actually. The accounting for tracking this and showing the amount that's funded and not funded in the health, retiree healthcare's only been around for a few years. The city's actually been funding its retiree healthcare for, for quite a bit longer than that, so a lot of communities are just starting to think about this and put some money aside, whereas the city's been doing it for, I think, over 20 years now. So you're 76% funded, making your required contributions, and those are, that's a good number as well. And I think, a way to look at those, I mean, we threw million, million dollar figures around, but I think a way to look at it is if you go to that far right column, there's the unfunded liabilities, a percentage of covered payroll, and the, the MERS number up above is 59%, and the, the OPUB number down below is 39%. So that really means the total amount of both the unfunded amounts of these together is less than one year's worth of payroll. So again, that's good. Obviously, there's still some, you know, you're not fully funded yet, but you're, you're close and getting closer. So I did want to just spend a few minutes on that. Any questions? I think Beth's going to talk more in a minute, too. Yes?
Just regarding your acronym here, you didn't spell out what the UAAL was.
Doc, I knew you were going to ask me that. That is the...
You mentioned it, but I kind of missed it.
Um, unfunded actuarial accrued liability, I believe, is, I was trying to remember what that was myself. I thought somebody'd ask that, but, and they use the word actuarial because again, it's not the actual liability. The actuaries are always smoothing things out because they don't want to have a lot of hills and valleys. They want to make it smoother.
Anything else, commissioners?
Couple last little loose ends to wrap up. We have also completed a single audit for the city. That's a federal compliance audit, but we just talked about is the financial audit where we audit the numbers. If an entity expends in excess of $500,000 of federal monies, you have to have a compliance audit as well. That is also included in the CAFR. It's like the back 20 or 30 pages or so. There's really nothing to report on out there. We didn't have anything that we thought was, wrote any compliance issues or findings or any other things that we, were recommendations to the city, or material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies that would be included back there. The city did have one in the prior year, which it acted upon and took care of, so there's nothing to report on back there, so. In its absence, if I don't tell you it's not there, you don't know, so I'm letting you know there's nothing back there to look at as far as findings or compliance issues. And that's about it for me. Any final questions on anything in here that I did not talk about?
Commissioner?
Okay.
None?
Let me just wrap it up with a thank you. A lot of work goes into doing the audit from the city's standpoint. We certainly thank Tim, Beth, Derek, and others in finance and the treasurer's office and departments throughout the city that spent a lot of time getting ready for us. The city was very prepared as always, and thanks to the commission for having us out, and we look forward to seeing you again next year. So thank you very much.
And our thanks to Brickley DeLonge. Our thanks, of course, to staff and our financial arm for their diligence in maintaining our, our financial health, and I, I think it's well worth looking at, again, as you pointed out, our coverage in our retirement funds. If anything's bringing down cities throughout the United States, it's not being funded for retirement obligations. But I think this is a prime example of, you know, sometimes in the heat of discussion, things go on in a particular municipality, and people start casting aspersions and saying, you know, Muskegon's headed, you know, down a road to perdition, but we ain't, and that's one of the key reasons we're not. Because cities go down the road to perdition because they're not managed well. They don't watch their finances. People are using city funds for their own personal piggy bank. Things are being spent willy-nilly without much thought to the future, and, you know, we run a very transparent, very professional organization, and we're, we're paying as we go. So Muskegon is here to stay. So again, thank you very much. Thank you, Beth, and your team throughout the finance departments, and keep up the good work. Any further questions before we take roll call for the acceptance of the CAFR? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we'll change gears again, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, to public hearings.
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, ADAC Plastics 2050, Port City Boulevard, planning economic development. Summary request, pursuant to public act 188 of 1974 as amended, ADAC Plastics 2050, Port City Boulevard, has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The company will be making an investment of $725,000 in real property improvements and plans on creating up to 90 jobs as part of the overall project, qualifying them for a 12-year abatement. Staff recommendation, approval of the resolution granting industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years on real property.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Transick.
Good evening.
Fill us in.
All right. All four of the public hearings tonight are related. ADAC will be making investments at two different locations in the Port City Industrial Park. They're requesting two separate IFTs and two separate 328s. They will be investing about $1.6 million in real property improvements between the two locations, and over $5.7 million in personal property improvements. They will be adding about 90 jobs over the next two years in between these two locations, and they have met with our affirmative action director, Duana Thompson, and we do have Bill Powers and Mr. John Shape here tonight from the company.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Thompson, you'd like to flesh some of this out for us?
Well, these are the kind of numbers that I'm kind of excited to report. We don't have very many companies in our area that report numbers like this in terms of equal opportunity, and so total Caucasian is 64%, minorities is 36%, male is 47%, and female is 53%.
Very good.
So, I mean, I think of all the companies in this area, I think that their company probably best represents the community that they're serving, so.
Questions or comments to staff? Commissioner?
Yes, I wanted to, after I looked at the numbers, I wanted to commend ADAC for their hiring practice. Really reflects the community as a whole, and appreciate that.
Gentlemen, is there anything that you would like to add this evening, or statement to make? And if you do, if we could have you, come on up and just read your name into the microphone for the record, if you may.
John Shape, and that's S-H-A-P-E of ADAC Automotive. And I just wanted to thank the city for all the help that you've given us over the years. We look at the city as really a very important partner in our success. The automotive industry is not one that's particularly easy. It has its ups and downs, but through the thick and thin, Muskegon has been there for us, and we're going to be here for Muskegon for the long term. So thank you very much.
And we appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Question?
Well, before I sit down...
Oh, Mr. Shape, before you sit down. I do have a question from Commissioner Markowski.
Similar question that we typically ask most folks when we're going through these hearings is, of the jobs that you're looking to add, what skill level would you anticipate those jobs to have?
There are, there will be entry levels, skill levels, plus there'll be skilled workers, too. What we're doing is adding really a very large assembly operation at the Old Hoff facility that we've just leased for a long-term period of time, as well as redoing an entire paint line that we had in the Port City facility. So we will need technical people. We will also need skilled assemblers, cell leaders, and the like. So it will be really through the whole gamut. There will not all be just entry-level loads and unloads. There'll be probably, I think, Bill, the breakdown, I think, was probably about 30% of those would be technical in some way, shape, or form.
And then regarding training, how do you typically train those new employees? Do you do that in-house?
We do it in-house and with Muskegon Community College. We have a program that we utilize with them to train people, and we also, we use a couple of temp agencies where we bring people in and they work with them as well, going ahead giving them some basic skills before they come to work with us to make sure that they can handle those, and then hopefully, if they work out, we hire them permanently.
Okay. I was actually going to ask that. You mentioned temp agencies. How often do you hire on the temp employees that you bring on? I know that's kind of an issue in town, turnover.
It's, it's, we try to flex our demands for labor by utilizing temporary employees so that we don't have to go ahead and remove permanent employees from the mix. Today, we have about 1,050 permanent employees, and at any given time, we usually have between 100 to 110 temporaries. That can fluctuate up and down, but if we find a good temporary employee, we will typically go ahead and offer that person permanent employment, providing that we have a position open for them.
Thank you.
Commissioner, chairman?
Yeah, just kind of curious about your hiring policies and concerns about some of the felons that have made mistakes and paid their debt to society. Do you hire felons in your company, or is there some type of policy that you have that excludes them?
We do not have a policy that excludes them. Our, our policy is very open. We would obviously look at the individual, and as you indicated, if the person's paid his debt to society, that, again, we maybe look at him with a little bit more scrutiny and make sure that the person is reliable and the position they're going to be in, but we don't have, we don't have a position that says, no, we won't.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to commend you as well, and your reputation basically speaks for itself. I heard a lot of good things about ADAC. Never worked there, but, you know, I know quite a few people that work there, so I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, the city working together with ADAC, and, you know, being business-friendly, and want to give you those incentives as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner? Anything else, commission? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this issue? You look awfully familiar, but could you give your name and your position?
Ed Garner, president, Muskegon Area First, 380 West Western Avenue, Suite 202. Just, just a couple of comments. We have certainly been working with ADAC Automotive as well on this, their prior project and this project as well. It's a, it's a great project and a great opportunity for Muskegon. Just a couple of comments. We have certainly been working with ADAC Automotive as well on this, their prior project and this project as well. It's a great project and a great opportunity for Muskegon. The Port City Industrial Park is going to be overflowing out there, just with all the expansions with Port City Group, ADAC Automotive, Fleet Engineers, and all those guys are just doing fantastic. I just wanted to make one comment and bring ours to the training issues and employment. As you mentioned, they are working currently with MCC on a new Michigan jobs training program grant that they have. But there's also a new training grant program funds available out there called the Skilled Trades Training Fund. Try saying it three times fast. Skilled Trades Training Fund, STTF. And we will be approaching ADAC Automotive, too, to see if they can use some of these funds. It's a $10 million pocket of money that just got created from the state and the state's budget. It started October 1. The funds are being rapidly spent. It's only $10 million for the entire state. And as of today, I know at least $2 million of that money is committed already. So, we're down to $8 million as we speak, and it's first come, first basis. It's meant to be short-term training stuff that can be accomplished within the next three, four months, because the goal is to go back to the legislature and ask for more money in the next year's budget. So, this may be another opportunity for ADAC Automotive to tap into some of those. So, Michigan works, processes applications, so I'll be working with them to approach the company and see if they can use some of these funds to help, help train our employees for ADAC Automotive and others as well. Just wanted to communicate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garner, and thank you for your partnership and all your good efforts on behalf of greater Muskegon. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to address the commission on this issue? If not, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years on the real property described.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German to approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years on real property for ADAC Plastics 2050, Port City Boulevard. Any discussion? Matt, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringa.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski.
Yes.
Mayor Galron.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Three more to go. Item B, please.
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, ADAC Plastics 2653, Othoff Drive, planning economic development. Summary request. Pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended, ADAC Plastics 2653, Othoff Drive, has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The company will be making investment of $926,270 in real property improvements and plans on creating up to 90 jobs as part of the overall project, qualifying them for a 12-year abatement. Staff recommendation: approval of the resolution granting industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years on real property.
Thank you. Staff, you've made all your comments. Commissioners? Any comments from the public on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, et cetera.
Motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facility exemption certificate.
Second.
For a term of 12 years.
Gotcha. It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Markowski, to close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years on real property for ADAC Plastics at 2653, Othoff Drive. Comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringa.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski.
Yes.
Mayor Galron.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Just like roundhouse today. Item C.
Request for an exemption of new personal property, PA 328 of ADAC Plastics 2050, Port City Boulevard, planning economic development. Summary request. Pursuant to Public Act 328 of 1998 as amended, ADAC Plastics Incorporated 2050, Port City Boulevard, has requested an exemption of new personal property. The company plans on investing over $5.7 million in personal property improvements at two Muskegon locations and is seeking a 12-year exemption on personal property. The exemption would include all new personal property investments during the duration of the exemption. The company plans on hiring 90 employees as part of the overall project. Staff recommendation: approval of the exemption of new personal property for a duration of 12 years.
Set on staff?
Yeah.
Comments from the public? Motion, please.
Motion to approve item D, request for an exemption of new personal property, PA 328 for ADAC Plastics, 2653, Othoff Drive, the exemption of new personal property for duration of 12 years.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Twenty, 2050, Port City Boulevard, right?
For item C.
Oh, goodness. I'm reading ahead.
Okay.
Can I do that with, too?
We got it.
At the same time.
It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski. Who seconded it?
I did.
You did. And seconded by the Vice Mayor to approve the exemption of new personal property for duration of 12 years for new personal property at ADAC Plastics 2050, Port City Boulevard.
And close the public hearing.
Comments or questions? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringa.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski.
Yes.
Mayor Galron.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, please.
Request for an exemption of new personal property, PA 328, ADAC Plastics 2653, Othoff Drive, planning economic development. Summary request. Pursuant to Public Act 328 of 1998 as amended, ADAC Plastics Incorporated 2653, Othoff Drive, has requested an exemption of new personal property. The company plans on investing over $5.7 million in personal property improvements at two Muskegon locations and is seeking a 12-year exemption on personal property. The exemption would include all new personal property investments during the duration of the exemption. The company plans on hiring 90 employees as part of the overall project. Staff recommendation: approval of the exemption of new personal property for a duration of 12 years.
Thank you. Staff, we're all set? Members of the public like to speak on this issue?
I move that the public hearing be closed and that we approve the extension, exemption of the new personal property for a duration of 12 years, ADAC Plastics 2653, Othoff Drive.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Wieringa, to close the public hearing and approve the exemption of new personal property for a duration of 12 years at ADAC Plastics 2653, Othoff. Questions or comments, Commissioners? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Turnquist, I'm sorry. Commissioner Markowski.
Yes.
Mayor Galron.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringa.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck in your endeavors. Thank you for being a part of Muskegon.
Thank you so much. It's just great.
And that takes us back to new business. Item B.
Supplemental MERS contribution finance. Summary request. One of the biggest financial challenges facing the city is pension funding. Relative to other cities, Muskegon's pension plans are considered very well-funded. Moreover, the city has already made difficult choices, including closing defined benefit pensions to new hires that will stop the further accumulation of long-term pension liabilities. Still paying down our existing pension legacy costs will present budget challenges for many years to come. Based on successful financial results for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2013, staff believes it is appropriate to take this opportunity to make a $500,000 supplemental payment to MERS. This is money that the city would be required to pay to MERS eventually. Paying early while we are in a position to afford it ensures time remains an ally instead of an enemy and will help ease pressure on future city budgets. Staff recommendation: authorize staff to make a supplemental $500,000 payment to MERS no later than December 31, 2013.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we authorize staff to make a supplemental $500,000 payment to MERS no later than December 31, 2013.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, and who wants the second? Seconded by Commissioner Hood to authorize staff to make a supplemental $500,000 payment to MERS no later than December 31, 2013. Questions or comments, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I think it's very appropriate that we do this. I'm very troubled by the current debate roiling the state, not just at the state level but at the municipal level, that somehow thinks that promised compensation for work delivered, labor used, is somehow a fringe benefit, an extra, an entitlement, or anything other than what it is, compensation for labor delivered. And I think we owe it to keep our promises to people. You know, if you're 30 years old or 25 years old and you're looking for a job and you're looking for a certain income level, you look at your whole compensation package, not just what's in your paycheck week to week. And if you don't have a pension, then you're going to expect more upfront in your paycheck because you're going to have to put more aside for your own. When you're 55 or 65 or 70, you no longer have the option of making that choice. You made your choice, you provided your labor, your years of life have gone by, and now you have to hope that your corporation, or in this case, the city, keeps its promise to you. So, I think it shows that we do respect our employees, that we do understand that this is part of their compensation package and not some sort of fringe or extra, and that we have an obligation to ensure that it's fully funded so that those individuals who've earned it receive it. And I think that the prudent thing to do is to, when we have a little bit extra like this, to top off that account so we're not facing the, and alls you have to do is read this week's Bridge magazine and see how this is devastating community after community around the state, because they're not taking steps like this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments or questions from the commission? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski.
Yes.
Mayor Galron.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringa.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, please.
First quarter 2013-2014 budget reforecast finance. Summary request. At this time, staff is transmitting the first quarter 2013-2014 budget reforecast, which outlines proposed changes to the original budget that have come about as a result of changes in revenue projections, policy priorities, labor contracts, updated economic conditions, or other factors. Staff recommendation: approval.
Thank you.
I move to approve the budget forecast for 2013-2014.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the first quarter 2013-2014 budget reforecast. Any questions or comments? Anything you would like to add in there, Beth?
Nothing really. It's first quarter, so there's usually not a whole lot. The revenues are a little bit higher because the permit fees are looking really good. Of course, there's some expenses related to that also. That's the biggest thing there, and we have budgeted for the supplemental MERS.
MERS, correct. Okay, thank you. If nothing else, roll call, please.
Mayor Galron.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringa.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D.
Rental Program and Environmental Co-Compliance Professional Services Agreement, Planning Economic Development. Summary request. To approve the agreement with SafeBilt of Michigan Incorporated to provide rental program and environmental co-compliance services to the city of Muskegon, including the lease agreement. The vacant building and dangerous building programs will remain with the Community and Economic Development Division with a supervisor and an inspector. Staff recommendation: to approve the agreement between the city of Muskegon and SafeBilt of Michigan Incorporated, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract at the discretion of city staff on or after December 1, 2013.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the agreement between the city of Muskegon and SafeBilt of Michigan, Inc., and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract at the discretion of city staff on or after December 1, 2013.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Wieringa, to approve the agreement between the city of Muskegon and SafeBilt of Michigan Incorporated, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract at the discretion of city staff on or after December 1, 2013. Questions from the commission? Vice Mayor?
Perhaps our Director of Community Economic Development could share with us how this is going to work. I know many of us, and certainly this was a theme in the recently completed campaign, feel that we have lost a step as far as code enforcement and the quality of attention we're placing in our neighborhoods to ensure that people are being good neighbors. And so, hopefully, this is a step to address that. So, if you could kind of explain how this is going to work?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I will say with our current staff, that we've actually, given the staff that we've had, which we have lost staff over time, but since we've taken on the rental program, we actually have come a lot further than it used to be and improved it quite a bit, so I give kudos to staff for that. It's no reflection on them that we're moving in this direction. It is true that we would, two things, one, save money, but also increase our blight fight efforts. And we feel that this is doing that by, number one, going with SafeBilt on the rental inspections as well as the code enforcement, which would be, we call it the Trash and Grass Program and the 24-hour terrorist notices. They will have, and we do have two gentlemen here today from SafeBilt, Kirk Briggs and Steve Burns, who can also address you if you've got questions of them. But my understanding from talking with Mr. Briggs is that they will actually have three full-time inspectors, two that will primarily be doing rental, one that will do code enforcement and rental, but the idea is all of them, as we've done in the past, is they're out there in the field and see things, they'll be able to share those with each other, as well as the inspection, the building trades inspectors who are through SafeBilt. They will also work hand in hand, so they'll catch more things and be able to be out there more. In addition, they'll have one, which is very nice to have, which we haven't been able to do that, but we'll have a backup inspector, an on-call inspector, that if somebody's sick or on vacation, they have access to this person who can come in, which I think will be a great help as well. They'll also have a full-time clerical and a part-time clerical that will be working on this. So, they will have more staff working on those, two, the rental inspections and the code enforcement. But meanwhile, by our department maintaining the code, the supervisor, which is Hope Mitchell, and one full-time inspector, who's John Schultz, who's with us now, we will be able to up the number of vacant buildings that we're out there looking for. John will be able to have a lot more time on the ground, looking throughout the city for vacant buildings, as well as do more of our inspections for zoning, which we've really cut back. It's, I would hate to say nonexistent, but, you know, unless we get complaints or that type of thing, we just haven't had the time to enforce on that. The outbuildings, the sheds, the fences, some of those kinds of things, or even follow-up after somebody's gotten a site plan approved, signage, some of those things that we'll be able to put more attention on. So, we also expect that to decrease the blight. So, through both of those, we'll have more people working on it. Selfishly, I'm also hoping that Hope, who is a very versatile and an excellent employee, as you all know, has many skills, and one of those skills is planning, which she used to do more of, so I'm also hoping that she'll be able to help with the planning end of it more with having a little more time available to do that as well. So, I think it's, it's a plus all the way around. We will keep the formal appeals as we do it now. If somebody is not happy with the decision that SafeBilt has made, they first would go to SafeBilt to appeal it. If they're not able to appeal it through SafeBilt, right now, they would go directly to Hope. Then we have a formal appeals board, which includes several of the department heads, and the inspector comes as well when those appeals come. So, we will still see those, for the formal appeals, we'll still have a, be a part of that. We also will have, be in constant, I would imagine, perhaps weekly to start with, but monthly to be meeting together to oversee, and now we know the inspections, building trades part of it, has increased and doing quite well because of the emphasis they've been able to put on this. We hope the same will happen with these other two areas, and Hope and myself will be following that closely and reviewing that to make sure that it really is making sense financially, and we'll look to all of you. You know, I would expect that you would see more out in the field. You might get more complaints from people saying, "Why are they writing me up?" And I should mention that because we do, as you know, have some areas that are not, that are complaint basis only, and I don't expect that SafeBilt will follow that same rule. So there will be some neighborhoods that maybe haven't gotten the enforcement because they really haven't needed it as much, but they may be seeing inspectors out in their neighborhoods more often. One other item that, and we may need to bring this back to you formally in the future, but I have talked with Jeff Lewis, SafeBilt has asked that we extend the contract for inspections another year to coincide with the three-year term of this contract. So that's something that we have said, that staff is fine with that, and so we'll probably be looking to do that as well, so that they're just on the same timeline.
So it looks like we're moving back in a direction where we'll be able to augment these type of obligations. I think from what most of us hear, whether we're talking to people individually in the public or neighborhood association meetings, I think if we hear anything, people want to get back to where it isn't complaint-based and we're capable of riding herd on problem properties better than perhaps we have been able to in the past few years.
Yes.
So I'm looking forward to this enterprise. Any other comments or questions or you have?
Just one more, they just, and this was in here, but they will be, they're also leasing the former civil service office.
Right.
So if you come up, they will keep those two. You can go in the one door for the building trades and the other door for the code enforcement items, and then they will have a back door themselves if they'll be able to get access between the two offices.
So another opportunity for a cookie and coffee reception.
Yeah.
Quick question. Now, right now, we only have one inspector working with the city right now, correct?
Yes, and the good thing for me, because I do care a lot about the staff that I work with, and this was an opportune time to look at doing this because actually, everybody will have a place of sorts. We've had, we had three inspectors, two of them have already retired. We'll be keeping John, who's employed with us. We'll be keeping Hope, and then we have one and a half clerical, a full-time and a part-time. One of those people, Marty, has just given notice that he will be retiring fairly soon. He's eligible for retirement. And then Stephanie, as it looks, is going to be hired full-time by SafeBilt, so she'll actually be in a better position than she is now, only working part-time. She's wanted to have full-time. So I think everybody, staff-wise, is in a good or better position than they have been.
Yeah, because my question is, okay, before we went ahead and made the transition with the city inspectors with SafeBilt, and I think they've done an excellent job, but when it comes to alleviating jobs, that's where I have a major concern. And, you know, also some concerns about that department. In the future, will we be contracting the other personnel staff or whatever to SafeBilt, or will they just transition over to them completely? So that's my concern, and, you know, you see it done gradually, little by little, you know, so, you know, when it comes to outsourcing jobs, you know, I'm very opposed against that. So I just want to look at your, I want your opinion for the future of this transition that you're looking at. Do you see any job stability within that department?
Well, for one thing, there actually will be more jobs created in terms of total number of jobs, since they'll be hiring more. I understand and I agree with what you're saying in terms of the city itself. I don't foresee, of course, we never say never, given the state of financial affairs these days. Certainly, Hope, she's got a, is valuable in many ways beyond just the code enforcement. So, you know, when it comes to planning, economic development, she can assist with all those kinds of things. So even if we didn't do all the code enforcement, there's still a lot. I mean, she could more than fill up every day of work doing other things. The vacant building actually is a moneymaker for the city, which is why we decided to keep it. I think it's going to be even more of a moneymaker as John has more time to delve into that. So given that, I would not foresee that we'd want to give that up. So at least in the foreseeable future, to me, I would see maintaining those positions.
And one other question. Okay, the dollars that's been, well, we leased that department out to SafeBilt, and those dollars that was generated, why haven't they been put back into that department to hire more staff?
In the current lease that they're?
Yes.
The, well, I believe, that would probably be a Beth question, but it probably just goes back into the general fund.
It's been going back into the general fund.
Okay.
I'm not sure what.
Well, I mean, to hire more inspectors within the department for the city. Because, you know, from what I'm hearing in complaints of the workload, you know, instead of, you know, alleviating these jobs, I mean, you know, so, you know, obviously, it's some of the employees that, you know, won't talk or anything, but that's why they come to, you know, their commissioners and they talk, and we want to make sure that our employees are satisfied and, you know, can come in and work in a, you know, government setting that they're happy with. But, you know, when you're outsourcing these jobs and, you know, they don't see any job security, you know, my concern again, you know, what, you know, the future holds, will they be alleviating more jobs? You know, and I just wanted to know why those dollars that was allocated from the lease wasn't put back into that department to hire more inspectors to take the workload off of the inspectors that was in there?
Well, I don't, in the current lease, I mean, that wouldn't be anywhere near enough to hire somebody, but I could say that what they're paying, that it's only 200 a month for the civil service office, but that could certainly go towards, that goes towards helping make a case for us keeping the staff, keeping Hope and John. Any of those revenues would help that situation.
Remember, and as you look at this, when these positions, you know, have been sourced out, we've all been doing it by attrition, so, you know, people are retiring. The other thing, too, is, you know, anything that we can do for the bottom line, the general fund is going to, you know, help us not have to do as much deficit, you know, spending as we have been, because remember, we're taking quite a substantial amount out of our budget stabilization fund each year in order to balance our budget. And anything that we can do to stabilize the general fund in the long term so that we can maintain, you know, some of the, what I would consider, they're all important services, but, you know, the real call from the public is, you know, the continuation of our public safety and the like, our public infrastructure and the like. And if we can, you know, actually get an increase in existing and maintain city services and upgrade the level of the inspections back to a level that we once experienced prior to the downturn, you know, eight to nine years ago, I think that puts us in a, you know, a very good position. As well as looking forward, as we're successful with this, it gives us added opportunities to work in collaborative manners with our sister communities out there that are going through the same thing. And, you know, hopefully, we can keep an eye on the issues in greater Muskegon that happen to degrade a community, whether it's a building, you know, rotting away into the ground or grass up to my hoo-hoo. So, anyway. Anything else for Kathy? Commissioner Markowski?
This is really just in general regarding the proposal. I, for one, mentioned signage. I am a big fan of upgrading our facades throughout the city, whether it be homes, whether it be businesses. You'll notice anywhere where there's been a revitalization, just of interest in an area, it spreads. So one person, whether it's through enforcement, whether it's through their own action of taking care of their property, it really makes the entire area better for everyone. And so I really, at this point, I'm focused on getting the job done. I appreciate if we can provide jobs for people in the community, one way or the other, but we need to get the job done. We need to make sure that people are held accountable for if you put up a building, if you build a home, it needs to be maintained to a certain standard. And I really think that we have failed for quite some time in keeping it to an appreciable standard where it needs to be. So I am in favor of this. The question would be, what SafeBilt experiences on changes? Were we to come up with brilliant ideas on ways to encourage people to do these things, whether it's changing our codes, whether it's creating a new ordinance? How quickly can they make those changes in their business so that we can make sure that it's enforced properly?
Hi, Kirk Briggs. I'm SafeBilt in Muskegon here, and I'm also the building official, and will be overseeing the rental program also. SafeBilt's a try and completely flexible outfit, where we can add staff or cover those needs as we, as we need to, to cover what the city needs. If the, in the future, if the city thinks they need to put more pressure in this neighborhood or that neighborhood, we can flex things to work that way for them. I've been really in tune with the paper articles about the battle with blight in the city, and since I've been working here, I've really become pretty passionate about this city. I just see it ready to go. I see the brew pubs happening, I see a bunch of other good stuff happening, and I'm pretty excited for the city myself. My wife and I are just starting to look now for a place to stay here. So most of the staff that we hire is from the area. We've hired a lot of city current staff when we've taken over the operation, so we've assisted you guys that way. And how else can I help you?
Well, the question, I guess specifically, is to your experience with changes in codes and ordinance. I mean, for example, we changed recently to allowing, you know, parking on the street and therefore not on terraces. Those types of things sometimes come up all of a sudden and have to therefore be enforced shortly thereafter. And so I'm just trying to get a feel for how quickly you can make those changes.
Yeah, we can enforce it as quick as you change it. So I've been an inspector for 21 years. I've gone through multiple code changes. I've made those adjustments in my career all the time. I'm entirely flexible. My staff is very competent and very flexible. In fact, we had interviews today with five individuals, they're all high-able, fantastic people. I could not believe the stock of people we have that applied for these jobs, and they're good, they're good employees. They'll be great.
What would you say is your average turnover, then? You know, you're hiring now, but in general, as an organization, are you able to maintain your employees long-term?
Yes, we are. Everybody that we talk to is, wants to finish their career with SafeBilt. People love working for this company. We offer the same, same sort of benefits all the other companies do. We'll be employing approximately between nine and 11 people full-time, and we'll be, we have three, we'll have three on-call people, building inspectors and a rental inspector. So there's employment in your neighborhood, in your community, that comes from SafeBilt, and we don't get any subsidies from the city or any, anything like ADAC just did. So this is, this is a real plus for hiring people in your community. So I think, I think in the long run, we're putting more people, we're getting more people employed than were previous to SafeBilt being here a year ago, so.
If not, thank you, Kirk. Thank you, Kathy. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck. Item E, please.
Next Michigan, West Michigan Economic Partnership Interlocal in Agreement for the West Michigan Economic Development Partnership Planning and Economic Development summary request. The West Michigan Economic Partnership Board is prepared to recommend next Michigan zones for our jurisdiction at their next meeting on November 13, 2013. Once approved by the WMEP, the zones will be forwarded to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for final approval. Once the zones are approved, the MEDC, as well as local entities, may start marketing them for development. In addition, the WMEP is expected to receive a marketing grant from MEDC to assist with its efforts. The zone recommended for Muskegon starts at the Mart Dock property and proceeds to the Ver Plank property along the shoreline. It is anticipated that additional land may be added in the future. Staff recommendation: the recommended approval of the WMEP for the next Michigan zone for Muskegon as depicted on the map. The zone starts at Mart Dock on the west and proceeds along the Muskegon Lake shoreline to the Ver Plank property on the east.
Motion, please.
I motion to approve the next Michigan-West Michigan Economic Partnership Interlocal Agreement for the West Michigan Economic Development Partnership Planning and Economic Development.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Turnquist, to approve the WMEP for the next Michigan zone for Muskegon as depicted on the map that we all were provided in our packets. Now, the zone starts at the Mart Dock on the west and proceeds along Muskegon Lake shoreline to the Ver Plank, Ver Plank property on the east. Would you like to fill in some blanks for us?
Sure, and if you have any questions, I did, we did discuss this at the last work session so that everybody could have a chance to go into further discussion about it, but this is basically the zone we talked about at that time. I was hoping we could include consumers in it, but they are going to financially assist us, but they don't want to make a decision until at least December, and I think you're all aware of their timeline when it comes to that, for being able to formally make an announcement. So we would like to have that property to be able to market at least a piece of that. But we do have the commitments from the other landowners that we can actively market their properties and they're financially contributing. Because the zone has to be contiguous, we are including John Rook's property and the Edison Landing property. However, they really don't benefit and they will not be expected to pay into it either. They're just, they're basically so we can hold the zone together. And so really, it's the Mart Dock and the Ver Plank properties, potentially, the Fisherman's Landing, since that's a part of that as well, and then in the future, we may come back to with extending that zone.
Questions?
Excuse me, did, we have a visual or anything of the actual layout of the zone?
It was in your packet.
Would you like to take a look at it?
Let me take a look at that.
Can I see it real quick because my thing won't load?
Vice Mayor?
Yeah. My question is, we've run into this in the past, for example, when we set up the Smart Zone, we had to remove it from the Downtown Development Authority District and so on. Is there going to be a conflict between this and some of the existing zones? Because all of this property is either in Downtown Development Authority District or in the Smart Zone District. So I just wondering, you know, I've assumed that it's been looked at, but I haven't seen that addressed in any of the materials so far.
You're right, it is another zone. I guess I hadn't thought about that, but we have a lot of zones and zones over zones and this, the only way this would affect, it's not capturing any increment or anything like that, so it's not going to affect either the Smart Zone or the DDA. It would affect it in the sense that if you grant, and it's approved by the MEDC, a renaissance zone at some point for a major development, that we're going to go into that zone. Obviously, with a renaissance zone, you would not be collecting taxes for that specific area where it's developed, so those taxes would not then go into the tax capture for the DDA. It wouldn't be in the Smart Zone because manufacturing that we're talking about with this can't occur on that site anyway. Again, that's one of the placeholders properties. But we do that now with the downtown. We've got situations like that. For instance, the Terrace Point development with the single-family condominium units is a brownfield tax capture, so now some of those increments, we did decide would go back to the DDA as well, a small percentage. But that's within the DDA, and we'll be capturing taxes to put back into that specific property. So that potential is there, but only if you, at some point, approve a renaissance zone. And as I say, the state as well has to approve those. And I'm sure we'd talk about that more extensively at the time that we got into that.
Just, I've said it before, I'll say it again, it's just, you know, doing an abatement where you're receiving more money, you're just foregoing part of what you would receive for a period of time, you know, at least you're still seeing a net increase in revenue with renaissance zones, even with the development agreements, you know, I haven't really seen the effectiveness of the tool as far as creating developments that actually generate a net benefit to the community. You know, at some point, we have to get the folks in Lansing to understand that police officers and firefighters and patching potholes cost money, and that means the people benefiting from those services are going to have to chip in. And not just the folks who live in the community, but the folks who economically benefit from being in the community as well, so. I just, I'll keep bringing that up as we talk about renaissance zones going forward. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Can you just remind us about the inclusion of Fisherman's Landing here? This, I... This, I read it would be to market all of these properties continuously, or contiguous, and you have it separated out from the adjoining Ver Plank property. So, what would be the intention of a marketing plan going forward, seeing as at this point there is no plan to do anything with Fisherman's Landing?
Right now, that Fisherman's Landing property is a placeholder, just like Edison's Landing and John Rook's property. It's only marketed in the sense that when we go out there locally, nationally, internationally with our zone, we're saying this is our zone. You cannot, today, somebody can't come and put a manufacturing, a major manufacturing enterprise on Edison Landing or on John Rook's property or on Fisherman's Landing. So, it's not, it's just there, again, to be contiguous right now. But if in the future that changes, then you could also include manufacturing.
Any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, please.
Concurance with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Decision to Demolish the Following Public Safety. 224 West Grand, 850 Turner, 860 Emerson Garage Only, 1324 Pine, 1459 Terrace, 868 West Hackley, 345 West Grand, 709 East Apple, Remove Concrete From Second Garage Only. Summary of request. This is to request that the City Commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of structures and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder. Staff recommendation to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Thank you. Before we proceed, we do have individuals here to speak on 224 West Grand, 345 West Grand, and 709 East Apple Avenue. Are there any other individuals here to speak on any of the other properties cited? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish 855 Turner, 860 Emerson Garage Only, 1324 Pine, 1459 Terrace, and 868 West Hackley.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish 850 Turner, 860 Emerson Garage Only, 1324 Pine, 1459 Terrace, and 868 West Hackley. Comments or questions? Not, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. As we go over the properties that have been held out, I'll ask staff to first come up and give a report on the properties, then I will call the interested party up to address the Commissioner and Vice Mayor.
Well, so we can begin the discussion on that, I would concur with the Housing, or move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish 224 West Grand.
Do you want to put the others in?
Well, there's different parties for each one, so.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish 224 West Grand. Chief, would you like to bring us up to snuff on that property, please?
What I'd like to do is, obviously, the property, we have sent out notices as early as July, and I have sent notices out to either that address, we've posted that house. We've also sent notices to where the owner would reside at. So, one, two, three, four, five notices have gone out. Of course, we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals and ask the Commission to move forward in demolishing the location. I would like to rebut what the individual of the house is stating here today, so if they want to go ahead, and then staff could rebut as to why we want to proceed. I'm not sure exactly what the complaints are.
Okay.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Before we get into it, because this will come up in the other two, one of the things I always look at here, reminding everybody that we have an appeals process, that if we concur and the property owner in question is sincere about wanting to renovate their property, they can seek a temporary restraining order through the Circuit Court. There is a 21-day period of time in which they may do that. That process has worked for those who are sincere in getting their property off of this list. When I look at the material and I follow these things, because some of these are in my neighborhood, including this one, I always look at owner contact. We've just heard that there were five notices sent out. I noticed that the owners were not present for the HBA meeting dated October 3rd, but that neighbor, a neighbor did come in and speak in favor of declaring the property a danger's building. The owners are sent those notices by certified mail. They were returned unclaimed. So, to me, you know, when we have this, I'll be happy to listen to what people have to say, but I'm inclined to listen to the board that's in charge of reviewing these situations and respecting the neighbors who have to live next door to this and have the property owners in question demonstrate their good faith by pursuing their avenue of appeal after we've concur with the Housing Board of Appeals. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? Mr. Peter Brown, if you'd like to address the Commission, please come to the podium and give your name and your address, and please cite your concerns.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Peter Brown. I live next door to 224 at 230 West Grand. My family has rented the property at 230 for a number of years. At one point, my fiancee and I wanted to purchase the house at 224, but the condition of it was beyond financial reason to improve the property. During the last year since we have lived at 230, there have been a number of illicit, well, semi-legal activities, including a car repair business, a dump, campground, all activities during the course of this past summer at 224. We know that the house is a fire hazard. Now, in defense of the property owner, they did send one of their family members out to clean up the property. And since that has been done, there have not been any delinquent activities at 224. But our strong feeling is that this is a blight in our block, in our neighborhood, and that I've said all this to the Board of Appeals. But I thank you for your time. I just wanted to point out that they did make an effort to clean up the property, which at least remained clean. No longer getting traffic through our, breaking down my fences. So, thank you.
I'll probably give you some relief here in a minute. Any other comments or concerns? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we concur with the Housing Board, Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish 345 West Grand.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish 345 West Grand. Chief, could you give a review, please?
There again, this has been in the process for quite some time, has gone through the Housing Board of Appeals, and they have moved to demolish the location. There again, we had some correspondence with a person over the last, I'd say, looks like a couple of months, but there again, no action has been taken. As of 11/6, a woman named Brenda has been contacting us about possibly donating it to a nonprofit organization. But once again, I ask that if a person is interested at this stage of the game to try to rehabilitate a property, there is a way to do that. Over the next 21 days, as the Vice Mayor has explained, that they would then come and start a process which would involve our city attorney, and they would actually put down a cash settlement to secure that the work will be done. If not, there would be cash available to continue on with the demolition of the property. And there again, at this, at this stage of this process, I urge the Commission to do that because, as you can see, they've been given multiple, I guess, times to take care of this property, and we're kind of at the end at this point. I'm not sure if anyone's here for 345 West Grand.
Yes, there. Ms. Bolheiss, if you'd just give your name and address, please, and please cite your concerns.
Brenda Bolheiss, I live, well, I work at Bell Bay Realty at 1685 68th Street in Caldone, Michigan. I'm here representing Blue Mountain Realty, who purchased this property. I'm not exactly sure if they did it in a, like a hedge fund or a mass purchase. They weren't aware of the condition of the property when they purchased it. At this, they weren't, we didn't even realize that the property was going to be demolished until about two months ago, when I contacted the city of Muskegon. Since then, they've been working very hard to find somebody, a nonprofit organization to donate this property, this property to. They have had two contacts with nonprofit organizations. They're not really interested in rehabbing the property themselves, but they are interested in donating this so that it could be rehabilitated for an owner occupant. These nonprofit organizations normally sell it to somebody who will rehabilitate it and will not, and they're not allowed to resell it for a year. They have to live there for a year. And so, they would like to be a good neighbor, and they want to do the best they can for Muskegon. They're not interested. And if you decide that you want to demolish it, that's totally up to you, but they feel it would be in the best interests of Muskegon to have this property rehabilitated.
How long ago did they purchase the property?
June of this year.
June of this year.
They had no idea that there was a problem. I know that the notices were posted on the door since 2012, but they had no idea until they, they just purchased the property, and they were obviously disclosed to them that there was an issue. This is what they do. They buy properties, they fix them up, and they sell them. That's what Blue Mountain does. And they were not aware that this property was in such poor condition, and that's why they're trying to work with a nonprofit, because they have more leverage. They, you know, they get the property donated, so they have more money to work with to try and rehabilitate it.
I think at this juncture, from my standing, I would suggest to Blue Mountain that they go through the regular process with the Circuit Court. The city of Muskegon currently works with any number of nonprofits through our community and neighborhood services department that does a bang-up job of going throughout the city, either rehabbing houses or doing new builds. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but this isn't the first time that we've had a new property owner not do their due diligence and find out that, you know, the wrecking ball is, you know, already in the parking lot.
And I totally agree with you on that point, but they're out in California. They see, oh, look, this house is only going for, say, $7,000, and they snap it up, thinking that it's, there's no issue.
Right. And what a silly thing to do.
I know, and I totally agree. It's just that they asked me to come in and represent them to say.
Absolutely.
It's not like they're trying to get away with anything.
Right, absolutely. But tell them, you know, if they want to go to the 14th Circuit Court and put down $5,000 and go to state, that's probably what they ought to do. And they got 21 days after that if the court concurs. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, having, you know, been on a board of a community housing development organization in the past, this really wouldn't lend itself to that. Normally, when your repair costs exceed your state equalized value, that's a big red flag, that it's a tear-down and do-over. And I noticed that just with what has been shown up on the inspections, which they did go inside, apparently, this has changed hands at least three times in the past year, according to the staff notes here. But the state equalized value is $19,900, and the estimated cost of repair is $3,000. And that's probably pretty low. So, I think that that's kind of reaching a little bit, to think that there's a nonprofit that would take a house on in that situation.
Commissioner Markowski?
Personally, with the information given to me, it appears to me that a company has made a purchase that they did not prepare for properly, and that at this point, they are trying to offload it without having to pay the expense of demolishing it for their poor purchase. So, I would not be in favor.
Any other comments? Thank you for your time. Please convey our best to the folks back out in California.
I will.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 709 East Apple Avenue. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish 709 East Apple Avenue, specifically to remove the concrete from the second garage only.
Second. It's been moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish 709 East Apple, specifically removing concrete from a second garage only. Chief?
My understanding of this is the fact that the garage has been removed and demoed, but the concrete still remains there. The, sounds like the landlord or owner of the property does not live there, believes the tenants do like this piece of concrete, would like to keep it there. Obviously, that does not fit with our ordinance, and we need to have it removed. He's been notified on multiple occasions. It's gone through the Housing Board of Appeals. It needs to be taken out. He feels that we wouldn't be able to get back there to remove it. We believe that we can hire a contractor. Even if they had to go in by foot with wheelbarrows, it could be removed. And there's some other things that he had talked about there, as far as not, I mean, really not wanting to remove it. So, at this point, I would concur with the Housing Board of Appeals and ask that this concrete be removed per our city ordinance and upon the advice of our Housing Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Chief. And Mr. Chivarene, are you in the audience?
I am.
And would you like to address us, please?
I would.
Thank you. We just need your name and your address.
Mark Chivarene. I reside at 4883 Stanwood, Muskegon, Michigan, 49441. I do own the house at 709 East Apple Avenue, and a few years ago, the city contacted me because it's not a garage. It was like a, like an extended building. It's, the concrete is only like 12-foot, maybe 14-foot wide by 10 by 15-foot long. It's not a two-stall garage, anything like that. The roof was caving in, and they said that that was, as you call it here, unsafe structure, substandard, and a public nuisance. I agreed to that, so I demolished it. I took it down. And the slab was left there, and it is not a public nuisance. It's not unsafe, and the public can't even get in there. The whole backyard is fenced in. I have now had a tenant in there for five years. She's a single woman. She has a dog. The whole backyard is fenced in, six-foot-high fence. Nobody can get in there. I recently just complied with the city. I had to paint the house, you know, bring it up to the city's standards. So, I painted the house. I had to put a couple of batteries in the smoke detectors inside. I passed that, and they required me to pay three fees that I had to pay, and I went in and I paid that. And now, they won't issue me an occupancy permit for that house because they will not close out this permit to take out, to take out the concrete. And the people really like the concrete back there. They use it kind of as their porch. I didn't know, I couldn't show you video. I took a video. I mean, we have iPhones, you know, so technology. I didn't take any pictures to show you the little slab of concrete. I did take a video of it, though, but I was told by Anne Marie that I cannot show that to you. So, they want it there. I have no way of getting it out of there. She's been a great tenant. She's been a great tenant. She doesn't want anybody in her backyard. She's a very private lady. If nothing else, give me a variance until she's no longer a tenant of mine, until she moves out, and then I can properly get back. I had to dig up a couple of her plants. I had left some of the structure that was in the backyard, and so, over the summer, I had to dig up a couple of her plants. She does the backyard up nice. She was very angry at me, and I thought she was going to move out, and that would not have been good. And now, I, we replanted the plants, and I have the video of it, and she does not want anybody back there. Like I said, she's a very self-contained person. So, if you can't grant me the privilege of closing out that permit, because that little piece of concrete is not bothering anybody, the public cannot get in the backyard. She has a pitbull dalmatian, so nobody is going in that backyard. So, at least grant me a variance or whatever until Jeanette Williams is no longer a tenant there, and then I can properly take the time to dig up the concrete and get it out of there. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well, you know, unfortunately, you know, the opportunity to ask for a variance for this kind of thing was with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it should have been done long before it got to here.
I was not aware of that meeting.
Well, but you're asking for us to basically not have you complete the demolition of the property.
I don't understand what code violated. I would be violating by leaving, if the building was still standing, the concrete would still be there.
It just, this is not a debate if you want to address the Commission and people can't hear you from your seat. The ordinance in question, and we require this of any demolition, is you have to remove anything under the ground. When you have new construction take place at some point, it's a real problem, and we've dealt with that in a lot of areas, and that's why the ordinance was amended years ago, so that anything that's under, below grade has to be removed as part of the demolition process. If the person wants a patio, if they want something like that, then they'd have to per, permit like anybody else and go through that process. I don't even know if this is suitable for that. I don't know if they're using it as a kennel, which would also require, there are just things you have to do to be a good neighbor when you live in a city, and the average lot size is 50-foot wide. You know, if you don't want people on your property, then I suggest 10 acres out somewhere where your nearest neighbor's a quarter-mile away is probably where you ought to be. But if you're in a community that's made up of dense neighborhoods where you have 10 and 12 houses on a block, then we have to be fair to everybody on that block and enforce these kinds of things equally. You know, this is not the taking down somebody's house or removing their garage. This is completing a demolition that was left incomplete.
If I could address the Vice Mayor's rebuttal there, I am not in a large, I am in a commercial area. I am actually right next to Mr. B.'s Pancake House. It's no longer Mr. B.'s.
Right.
And then, on the other side, the house is totally demolished. It's gone. It's a vacant lot. And so, next to that is System and Funeral Home. Right across from me is Brenda Baum and State Farm, and right next to that is a chiropractic office. My lot is not 50 by 50. My lot is two or three of these rooms here, and it is completely fenced in, along with the fence from Mr. B.'s Pancake House. So, there's no way that anybody's going to wander onto the property, getting over my fence, and with her dog in there. So, number one, it is not a public nuisance, and I was not aware of the meeting that I was supposed to come to to apply for a variance. So, otherwise, I would have been here stating my case then instead of now. It just seems to be an overstatement on saying that somebody's going to go there and build something in the backyard while she's living there, you know? That's why I asked for the variance, at least give me until she moves out, and then I will complete getting the concrete up for this reason. I went into SafeBuild several times throughout the summer and asked what code states that I have to have the concrete up. I mean, why can't I leave it here for this lady? And there's no dog kennel back there, and once again, I have the video. If you guys would like to see it, you're welcome to see it. Yes, ma'am?
During several of your trips to SafeBuild, at any point, did you ask when you should be asking for a variance?
They never mentioned anything about having to take a variance. And not only that, I had to call my insurance company up while I was in SafeBuild. I had my insurance company fax over papers, because they were talking about just coming in there and tearing down my big garage that I have there. I have a two-stall garage right there, and I just put a new roof on it several years ago. I had to bring pictures into that. I had to have my insurance company show facts that, you know, there's not an unsafe house there. Not only that, I had to have, I had a policeman come out and give me a report on the garage that's standing, because all SafeBuild could say is, there's holes in the garage, and I'm saying, "Officer, do you see any holes?" And I have a police report for that.
I have a question for the Chief. I just had a question for the Chief.
Yes.
Do you have a list of the notices he'd been served regarding his opportunity to appeal?
Yes, we have a file. I believe Hope has that. She could address it. Do you have that with us right now?
I have part of it.
Why don't you step up here?
Part of it's still at my desk.
Yeah, we don't bring everything with us, but-
Just as to whether he signed for that or received that notification that you're aware of.
Okay.
I was talking to, who's in front, Jen?
Deb.
Deb, Deb.
Yeah, Deb, what's your last name?
Jensen. Deb Jensen. I was talking to Deb Jensen while I was bringing in, while I was bringing in all my paperwork, showing that the garage in front was not the garage that they were talking about. And she says, "Well, if you don't do something on this, we're going to tear it down," and there's the appeals. And I said, "Look," and I got my insurance company to call them up, so on and so forth. So, at that particular point in time, she didn't contact me on anything else about appearing out of order of appeals.
Commissioner, I can tell you this, there's, this memo has like basically two rounds of notices. They start on 10/17/2007, and they run all the way to now.
That was the next page, the cover page of their agenda packet.
Okay. But like I said, you know, you can see where, I came in front. Anyways, in the second round, it started back in April 25th, 2013, that a notice order was sent, and then, did you receive that?
I did receive that, and that was to remove the debris that was back there.
Okay.
And I took four trailer loads of debris. That's when I had to uproot my tenant's plants, and she was very angry at me. And I took four loads of debris down to the dump and got rid of it.
Right. We had communications with them back in June, and then long about August 1st, we were back there, referenced the second garage we're talking about. That's when SafeBuild found that the concrete, the miscellaneous were still there, and they were not demoed. That's when we discovered that, and I think it started from there, right?
In August.
About in August 1st?
That sounds right, I guess.
Sounds right. And then, of course, this is going on, and then finally today, you know, it's back here, that he did not complete the original demo back during first round.
But I think what the Commissioner asked is, was I notified of that? And I wasn't. I was not notified that I could come in here and address a committee like this and have a variance for at least when Jeanette moves out, then I could, you know, take the rest of the concrete out. But right now, she really likes that concrete there, and she would appreciate it if I don't disturb her yard, and after all, it is her yard.
I think the point of the matter is that the demolition of this building we talked about, and the upper all the way into the ground, was supposed to be completed quite some time ago, but you got most of it done, you just didn't take care of the concrete. Was the tenant there when you basically finished doing the building?
She was there from the beginning to the end, and the permit that I pulled to take it down didn't say anything, was not specified anything that I had to remove the concrete. The permit that I pulled was specified because there were holes in the roof of the garage, and some pieces of the garage were falling inside on the floor. And so, it was specific for tearing down the building. It did not say anything that I had to remove the concrete underneath the building, and so, I didn't do that, and she really likes it.
I'm going to make a suggestion here, but Hope, if you want to fill in a little-
The original permit was to rehab and fix the garage. That was the original, but then I'm guessing when he went to go and actually delve into it, it got changed.
Yes.
But it wasn't actually changed in our actual records, that he was changing it to demolition. So, that's how the big confusion of the garage he currently has there possibly being that dangerous building. Once he provided proof it was the other garage, we did find a picture, and that is in your packet as well, of where that second garage was, behind the current garage. So, if you happened to have driven past, that's why you didn't see.
Well, you can't-
The other garage, because the other garage is right there.
Commissioner, any questions?
Is our most recent picture from 2007, or the three pictures below Kirk?
Where's the garage? Can we see it?
What we read.
The 2007 picture, that is the garage from when it was there originally.
And the pictures below that, what are they?
The pictures below are what Kirk had taken from SafeBuild over the fence to show the concrete was still there.
So, those are recent?
Yes.
I can, you can see that she just has a little bench on there, and she just likes to go out there and sit.
Mr. Chavarini, you have one more potential appeal-
Okay.
-process. The Commission can vote to approve the demolition. Mr. Chavarini, you can submit a letter to the city manager-
Okay.
-in this week for a manager's review on the situation.
What should I state in there, what I stated here?
Yes.
Okay.
When did that become the process?
It's just as far as whether or not you can leave a foundation in after demolition, the manager has authority to grant a waiver. So, this is different than the other demos that we're doing, because this is specifically about leaving a foundation after a, essentially after demolition. So, he could request for me, I think, a grant, and one for Brunswick, and they've been granted in the past under special circumstances if they can want, you know, if they can show a reason why, you know, why it makes sense to do so.
Unless...
I think Mr. Chavarini needs to recognize that notwithstanding the appeal with the city manager, the 21 days starts to run on a circuit court action from today. And there are certain requirements in the ordinance that would have to be met in order for the waiver to be granted. And I'm not, and I'll leave it at that. Yeah, I don't think we're saying that it would be granted. We're saying that it's an option, an option to, you know, to see if it could be granted.
And that would be something you would review.
Can I just make a final comment regarding?
Please.
The only reason I questioned and asked me for further information is not because I'm trying to give in the past, but to make sure that no parts of the process have been missed. It sounds like there was some confusion, and possibly, you know, that's not necessary. But in addition, with the actual piece of property that this is in comparison to the other demolitions, it's not currently hurting anyone. It's not currently in the way. If it was to be deemed unsafe, I think it would be a different situation. And personally, I think that the cost for us to go in and demolish it and then attempt to recoup is frankly possibly more burden than it's worth. So, I was simply looking for an alternative arrangement, so that's why.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well, I understand all that, but, you know, when we start, when we start making these decisions based on who comes up and makes the most noise, based on, you know, who makes a stronger appeal, then how do we enforce it for anybody? Our ordinance is pretty clear-cut. To demolish a structure, you have to remove everything that's below grade. That's not, you know, ambiguous at all. And this is a process that's been going on since 2007. There's been ample communication between the city and the property owner by the property owner's own statement. At this point, there is remedy for relief if he chooses to take it. I think we have to be clear, because we've dealt with this before, including one I drive by every day at the intersection of Sixth and Laketon, it's a little off the intersection, where people have demolished a dangerous building on their own and not finished the job correctly and left issues. Well, we can say, well, you know, this is a minor thing, and in the overall scheme of things, this is a minor thing, but what do we do for the next person, where it's a little less minor?
That's the tough part.
And how do we sit there and look that person in the eye and say, "We're going to treat you differently than we treated this other person," when the legal issues are the same? So, I would suggest we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals, let the remedy that's been suggested through our normal ordinance process play out, and I'm sure that this matter can be resolved that way, one way or the other. So, I would suggest that at this point, we vote to concur and let the gentleman use the options that have been presented to him by our manager and our attorney.
Commissioner?
Yeah, just one other question for Hope. Now, when the gentleman pulled the permit and everything that the permit, excuse me, that the permit stated, he complied with, right? Paid all his fines, and under the city ordinance, moving, you know, when it came to demolishing the garage, it didn't specify anything about anything for the concrete, so-
It was in the defect list, but when the inspector went out, he saw the garage was standing and did not know, realized that the concrete was behind the garage that is currently standing.
Okay.
Second round, yeah. And so, since the permit was not finalized, we cannot issue a certificate of compliance-
Okay.
-until that has been complied with.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just so I'm sure what we're going on here, we're going to vote, if we vote in favor of demolishing the building, the one, or-
Demolishing, to have the concrete removed.
Removing the concrete. But he, Mr. Chavarini, still has the option to talk to the city manager. That is still in there. Okay.
And to get a temporary restraining order from the court of appeals if he chooses.
All right. We're going to vote.
Commissioner Murkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
No.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
No.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. You have the two options. Any other business commissioners? Vice Mayor?
I have one item. I brought this up previously. You know, I kicked myself because I chose to go to a baseball game to celebrate my dad's birthday and my birthday and missed the relevant planning commission meeting where the site plan for the new farmer's market was somehow allowed to slip through without sidewalks on Market Street.
Really?
We have talked to them unofficially about making sure there are sidewalks on a public street, particularly given the expense that was paid to put the sidewalks that were there in in the first place, and they've reached the point where they are doing the work, and it's very clear that they have not prepared the site to put sidewalks in on Market Street based on where the landscaping is going. And quite frankly, one way or the other, I'm sure there's plenty of room to discuss it, but we can't have a street in the middle of our downtown that is not accessible to pedestrians. That's the complete opposite of a walkable downtown that we're all trying to create. So, I'd just like that addressed at some point between now and when the market opens come May. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thing, Commissioner? Any members of the public would like to address the Commission before we pause for the cause?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.